Call this January 15th meeting of the Williamson County Board of Commissioners to order. Start with, we have Ricky Jones for the invocation and Bert Chalfant for the pledge of allegiance. Everyone, please stand.
Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and we thank you for the blessings that you have given us and we thank you for the opportunity to serve as commissioners of Williamson County and we thank you for the opportunity to live in such a great county. We also thank you for those that have decided to run for office and we ask that you be with our governor-elect, Bill Lee, one of our own native sons, as he takes office and leads us in the next four years and we ask that you be with him and his administration. At this time too, dear Lord, we want to thank you for Sheriff Jeff Long, who will be leaving us in his years of service here in Williamson County and we ask that you be with him as he goes on to his new position. We ask that you be with each of us tonight as we discuss county commission business and may we do it in an amicable way. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, it's time for roll call. If everyone here, please press your yes button.
Press the button.
Hmm? Yes is the present button. Barb? All right, call the roll, please, Mr. Anderson.
Twenty-one present, three absent. Commissioner Ozbrook, Commissioner Robbie Beal, Commissioner Keith Hudson.
Commissioner Hudson's just come in.
Okay.
So...
Twenty-two.
Gets us twenty-two present.
That's correct.
I have heard from Commissioner Ozbrook, she can't be here tonight. I don't know if to say she hurt her back and it's just not feeling like getting out. I think is the least I heard. I have not heard from Robbie, so...
He just texted me, he's on his way.
On his way, all right. Okay. Next order of our business is approval of minutes. If these were emailed to each commissioner, we'll entertain a motion.
Smith and Jones.
Smith, the motion, and Jones the second. Dwight Jones, any additions or corrections? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is Citizens Communications. We have no Citizens Communications, so next we'll have Communications and Messages and we have a proclamation for Commissioner Rainey. Are you...
I am.
You're doing... (laughing).
Down there?
Yes. Come on. Let the... Before you start, let the records reflect, Commissioner Beal is now present. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to offer this proclamation to the Franklin High School Band. Whereas the 2018 production of the Franklin High School Marching Band is called Out There and features prelude in C-sharp minor piano concerto number two, movements two and three, and the symphonic dances movement three by Sergio Rachmaninoff and All By Myself by Eric Carmen. And whereas the Franklin Band is under the direction of David Adelot and Jacob Campos with assistance by color guard directors Levi Brandenburg and Michael Horvath, percussion director Nick Sype and visual director Vlad Clemmensen. And whereas the Franklin Band captured number two place at the Bands of America Tennessee Regional Championship at Austin Peay State University in a field of 26 bands from eight states. And whereas the Franklin Band took top honors at the 56th Annual Contest of Champions at Middle Tennessee State University, earning the grand champion title. And whereas the band also defended its Tennessee State Marching Band Champion Title, bringing home the prestigious Tennessee Governor's Cup Trophy for the seventh time. And whereas during the preliminary competition at the Bands of America Grand Nationals Championship at Lucas Oil Stadium in Indianapolis, the Franklin Band placed 10th of 108 bands from across the country and was among the 37 top-scoring bands from all classes that advanced to the semifinals. And whereas the band scored during the preliminary round was 89.12, the highest the band has ever scored at a Bands of America event. And whereas the band placed 3rd of all class AAA bands at the Grand Nationals Championship and 17th place overall. Now therefore, be it resolved that our county mayor, Rogers Anderson, as the mayor of Williamson County, Tennessee, and the members of the Board of Commissioners, meeting in regular session this the 15th day of January 2019, hereby congratulates this band and recognizes the level of excellence exemplified by the 2018-19 Franklin High School Marching Band. And in witness hereof, county mayor Rogers Anderson has by his hand caused the great seal of the county of Williamson to be affixed at Franklin this the 15th day of January 2019. It is our pleasure.
Stand and then come forward if you're here. Anyone from the band?
Just stand.
Just stand.
Is he here? (applause).
Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Okay, let's do it. Well, somebody told me it is. I just had all this stuff. (laughing). One more. Oh, yeah. Hey, we're amateurs at this. He's the winner 18 times. We thank you all for your patience. Thank you very much. Thank you all so much. Mayor, would you like to start your way forward while he's finishing pictures?
Reports of county offices.
You'd think Jerry was running tonight, wouldn't you? (laughing). Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to come for you tonight. I have four items that I'll be touching on tonight and the very first one, one of the most important ones that we have is under Commissioner Jones's prayer, he made mention to our sheriff, Jeff Long, leaving and so kind of let them get out. So it is the great... It's the great state of Tennessee and the incoming governor, Bill Lee, has chosen, I think, one of the classiest men that we've had to serve in the office of sheriff in many, many years. There have been some very good ones, but Jeff has repeatedly shown and demonstrated his expertise, his concern for his law enforcement, men and women. He's served at the state level. He's just done an outstanding job and as much as I'm sure all of us hate to lose him, it is the state's wonderful, proud honor to have him do a job for our state from Mountain Home to Memphis, Tennessee. So Jeff, this will be your last time. Sheriff Long coming up here and addressing the body and I will turn this microphone over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, it's sad for me tonight. Today is my last day to serve as your sheriff. I am deeply honored and humbled as I reflect back on the 10 years that I've served. The sheriff's office in Williamson County is the envy of sheriff's offices across this state and this agency stands out among all law enforcement in Tennessee as one of the finest. I would like to ask for all the employees of the sheriff's office to please stand. This is your sheriff's office. This is why you're proud and this is what makes us ranked as one of the top in the state of Tennessee, is the employees. Thank you. I never thought that I'd be leaving in the middle of a term, but God leads us down the path to better serve Him as He did when the door for sheriff opened in 1998. He has opened the door for me to continue to serve as the Commissioner of Safety and Homeland Security. I am deeply ingrated to Governor-elect Bill Lee for selecting me for that position, which is a very important position in our state government and I hope that I can live up to his expectations as his commissioner. I want to thank the mayor and the commission for all your support. You have been great to me and to our staff. I also want to give a thanks to Mike Looney and Mayor Anderson for placement of the SROs and all schools leading our state. I want to give thanks to my family. Flash it, Diane. We had a signal she was going to give me to get me out of this. I want to thank my family. They have stood by me for the entire 10 years and have sacrificed tremendously to allow me to serve as sheriff. It has taken away from family time. It has taken away from the responsibility that I needed to have as a dad and as a granddad and as a husband, but they have stood by me the entire time and I want them to know how much I appreciate it. What an honor it's been to serve as your sheriff. To the people of Williamson County, thank you for that honor. It has been tremendous. There is no better place to live and work in Williamson County, Tennessee, and I am so thankful to have had the opportunity to work with each and every one of you and also to represent this community. I would ask that you support and continue to support the Williamson County Sheriff's Office as you have while I've had the honor to serve as your sheriff. Chief Deputy Dusty Rhodes will assume this duty by law and he knows exactly what to do. He's got 39 years of experience. He's been an acting sheriff in the past and he will carry this agency to another height. Again, I don't want to take much time, but I do want to say again, thank you and it has been a tremendous honor. Thank you. (applause).
Gives tearful remarks, particularly men, this isn't a remark for men versus women, but I'm reminded of a passage in the Bible that all of us know that Jesus wept and I'm reminded, if it's good enough for Him, that's probably an example for a lot of us men and it just shows the passion this man has for his family and his men and women, but above all, his county. So with that in mind, if I could, I'd like to call on legal counsel. Some of you have asked, some of you have called in, what are the procedures from this point forward? Sheriff Long's letter of termination has been received and you are receiving it and today will be his last day, so the question is, what happens next? And our counselor, Jeff Mosley, gave a wonderful explanation at the Budget Committee, which all of you are not able to attend, but Jeff, if you would, cover the grounds and what... How do we go forward from here?
Sure. The first question was why we weren't voting to replace Sheriff Long at this meeting and that really comes down to the fact that the vacancy was not effective until today. As such, the advertisements have to go out and there has to be a certain timeframe within which the applicants can not only make their desires known to seek that office, but they also have to meet the post-certification requirements and fill out the applications and get that information into the state. That has to be certified by them and comes back to them usually about 20 days. We put the advertisement in place on notice for the February meeting. In the interim, by statute, the chief deputy will assume the duties of the sheriff until such time as this body appoints an interim sheriff. That sheriff will then serve until the next general election, the next general election being August of 2020, with the primary next year, of course, presidential year being in March of 2020. So the applications have to be in, the post-certification has to be in, in advance of the February meeting so that you can act on that appointment at that time.
Thank you, Counselor. Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to call up Karen Parrish, our trustee. Karen has got a short report to make in regards to our tax relief program for our citizens here in Williamson County and how they work and a little explanation about, particularly in the area of tax relief for the elderly. Karen?
Thank you, Mayor Anderson, and I don't know if I hate to follow that emotional time there, but I did want to bring you up to speed and I... Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, basically, the mayor asked me to come and make a report because in your county commission budget, not only in the general overall budget of the county, but in one of your line, budget lines, under the county commission budget, is your largest budget item, which is the tax relief program. It's $650,000 this year and so, especially for those of you who may not have been on the commission long, you may not know exactly what that entails, so I just wanted to bring you up to speed on what our office does. The trustee's office is pleased to administer three programs on behalf of Williamson County for tax relief and tax freeze for seniors, disabled citizens and disabled veterans. So of that $650,000 budget item, I'm working off of last year's numbers because we're still processing applications this year, but our staff, we have three of our nine staff members who are dedicated solely to administering the tax relief programs. I actually wanted to recognize our tax relief coordinator, Lisa Jackson, who's here tonight. Lisa? I appreciate her efforts. Our other full-time staff member, Melanie Glenn, and a part-time staff member, Tracy Carner. They have 40 years combined experience serving the citizens of Williamson County in our office, helping citizens with the tax relief applications. Of the $650,000 allotted to tax relief, about $450,000 last year was spent on the Broad-based Tax Relief Program and that aided 1,200 households in Williamson County who had an income of... Let me check my numbers, $35,280 or less. So those are seniors 65 or older whose primary residence is their home in Williamson County. And so as you're considering, you know, as property values go up, assessments go up and in some cases, tax rates go up, it does shield them somewhat from those increases. It's a rebate that consists of part of their county tax, property tax, their will tax that they pay and also a portion of their local option sales tax. So we're pleased to administer that. In addition, we take applications and submit them to the state of Tennessee for about 1,000 seniors and disabled citizens each year. The state contribution last year for the elderly and disabled was a little over $150,000 and there was another $150,000 county tax dollars that went to match those funds. So those two together were a little over $600,000. But in addition to that, in addition to what you see in the budget, there's another almost $300,000 in tax savings on the tax freeze program. That assists 1,600 households and shields them from tax increases. So if applicants... And that income limit is a little higher, it's $52,630 this year. So if citizens or homeowners who are 65 or older make that amount or less, they can freeze their taxes at the year that they come onto the program and they will never experience the tax rate increases that anyone else does or the tax increases. So together, that's about a $900,000 investment that you make. Makes a great difference to our homeowners, our senior homeowners. We hear so many, we get cards, letters, thank yous all the time and I just wanted to pass that along to you, what a difference it makes to many, many people in our county. I will also say that we administer another tax relief program, which is the tax relief for disabled veterans. And so if anyone who is listening or watching is totally and permanently disabled as a veteran who's served our country, it's a service-connected disability, they should contact our office as well. We do all of these programs by appointment, so anyone should just call our office, speak to one of our tax relief representatives and we'll be happy to make an appointment and see if we can qualify you. If I have any questions?
Mr. Sturgeon?
Thank you, Karen. I was just... Wanted to know, what are the qualifications for the tax freeze other than the income? Is there an age requirement?
Yes, 65 or older. The home has to be the principal residence of the homeowner, so there are... There's quite a bit of documentation that we have to get because obviously we try to spread the word. We want as many people to qualify for the programs as can be qualified, but we want to uphold the standards of the programs and make sure that everyone who's receiving the benefit is eligible.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. As I was standing there, I was looking over the shoulder of Karen and she didn't prompt me to say this, but Mrs. Anderson's husband is in grave condition, so you might keep her in your prayers and her family. Before I asked Nina to come up, I would call upon, not call upon, but on your desk, there's a booklet, pamphlet, that's put out by Vinyl Signs. This is out of Nashville. A lot of the funding comes from the Greater Regional National Council, GNRC is what we refer to it at, with a lot of data for the middle Tennessee area. Jennifer with Vinyl Signs, Jennifer Crates is here with Vinyl Signs, if you have any specific questions. But then there's also a sheet that you should have that's got that same color logo across the top that specifically deals with Williamson County in their report and in their data. And I don't want to insult your intelligence, but I do want to read a few of the highlights in the Williamson County section because of the people watching TV or watching this on a replay. And we will also have Jennifer's email address for the folks that are watching on television on the replay tomorrow, ways to contact her. Williamson County's growth grew 33% from 2007 to 2017, an enormous amount of growth that you have to deal with every single month about how do we handle not only children in our schools, but our jail population, our juvenile population. And the projected growth from 2017 through 2025 is another 16% growth. Our median income for the workforce was over $105,000 and if you add up the bachelors or greater, you will see nearly 60% of our population is... Falls in that range with a less than 2%, 2.5% unemployment rate and 69% of our people are working. Interesting data that was buried deep into that, that Joe Horn makes a report from every year to the GNRC, Greater National Regional Council, is about the estimations of projects that are coming online, buildings, school buildings, other than school buildings and roads and things like that. And from 2013 through 2018, there was approximately 347 projects. This is city and county wise, at a cost of over a billion dollars here in our county. And the projection for the next five years is somewhere in over a billion dollars too. And we've questioned them on that and they're going to go back and look at that. I personally think that'll be much greater than that because of the amount of dollars we're going to have to spend on highway improvements over the next few years. Our affordable medium household income in 2017 was $105,000 as compared to $100... Excuse me, as compared to $81,000 in 2007. So you can see some of the data and the raw material that's passed out. Hope you enjoy that. If you have questions, contact Jennifer or contact myself and we'll get your answers. And finally, I want to ask Nina to come up now and give you a snapshot of our financial picture that we have here over the last 60 days. Nina?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. In your packets this evening, we have our usual monthly reports. You have your budget report for the month of October and November. We're tracking on target as we do each year. There's nothing unusual really to report about either of those months. We also have our Cool Springs Conference Center reports. We did make a profit both in October and November. In October, we received, the county's portion was $143,486 and I think it's always good to remember that's shared with the city, so the total profit was 286,971. And then in November, the county's portion was 63,790. You also have the summary by year and month of our county profit-loss statement with the Cool Springs Conference Center, so we're tracking very well this year. Also in your report, you have your November privilege tax report. We collected a little over a million dollars in the month of November and if you'll notice in your chart with your privilege tax where the adequate schools tax and the privilege tax are reported, this year, we're... Our collections are down somewhat, so we'll continue watching that. Not sure that it's really a trend yet, but that's something we'll keep our eye on. You also have your education impact fee report. Total collections through October is a little over $25.7 million. Also this evening, I was asked to go ahead and touch on three of the resolutions that you have coming up in your packet. The first resolution, 1198, is an initial resolution for $18,250,000. This is for the capital recovery and reinvestment project proposed by Schneider Electric. So the first resolution, the $18,250,000 is an initial resolution and that allows us to advertise this in the paper. Any non-school projects have to be...
profit was 286,971. And then in November, the county's portion was 63,790. You also have the summary by year and month of our county profit-loss statement with the Cool Springs Conference Center, so we're tracking very well this year. Also in your report, you have your November privilege tax report. We collected a little over a million dollars in the month of November. And if you'll notice in your chart with your privilege tax, where the adequate schools tax and the privilege tax are reported, this year, we're, our collections are down somewhat, so we'll continue watching that. Not sure that it's really a trend yet, but that's something we'll keep our eye on. You also have your education impact fee report. Total collections through October is a little over $25.7 million. Also this evening, I was asked to go ahead and touch on three of the resolutions that you have coming up in your packet. The first resolution, 119-8, is an initial resolution for $18,250,000. This is for the capital recovery and reinvestment project proposed by Schneider Electric. So the first resolution, the $18,250,000, is an initial resolution, and that allows us to advertise this in the paper. Any non-school projects have to be advertised with a notice in the paper, letting the public know that we have an upcoming bond issue. And there's a 20-day protest period before we can actually issue the money. The second resolution pertaining to this is 119-9. It's an intent to fund for $17,947,584. So there, the difference between the, this resolution's dollar amount and the first one, the first one is the full funding, which includes your closing costs, and so those are the difference between those two amounts. The third resolution is to get us started on the project. It is for $10 million for a bond anticipation note that can get us started and bridge us through till we issue our bonds in November. I think I was also asked to kind of touch on our budget guidelines for the upcoming year. The Budget Committee and staff have set those for the upcoming year. Salaries are looking at a 3% salary increase. Your operating budgets are status quo unless you have growth items. New positions are reviewed on a case-by-case basis. The capital expenditures are by request, and will be reviewed by the mayor and the committees. And travel requests have to be approved through the mayor as well. So I'll go through briefly our budget calendar. It's a little bit different from the schools. They get started on their budget processes a little earlier than we do. So in January, we start to evaluate our property taxes, the summary from our trustee, our property assessor, start getting those monthly reports and projecting the property taxes. Then we'll start meeting with the various departments to review those with the mayor and his staff, and they will also go before the various committees. And then April through May, we have the budget hearings with the Budget Committee. Around Memorial Day, the consolidated budget is published in the paper. Mid-June, the public hearing for consolidated budget. And then in July, the approval of the new budget. So that's all I have this evening, unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Nina. Mr. Chairman, that concludes everything that I wanted to touch base on tonight. I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Ms. Holman for the schools.
Good evening, Commissioners, and Happy New Year. Can't say that it's been a long time since we've seen each other, so welcome back to work. We're working on our budget. We just started earlier because we have to get it to you at a certain timeframe. I would like to express our appreciation from the board for Jeff Long also. He has been a partner with the Williamson County Board in many projects that we've done. We thank him for the SROs. We thank him for a lot of things that he's done, his investigations that he does for us. He does them quickly, and we just want to say thank you to him, too. The enrollment pre-K to 12 is 40,808. We are 82 over our projections, so it's a little bit down from our December, because that always happens with early graduation. It will creep back up. We've had a successful second semester start, no problems. The only thing tonight that I noticed was way far down on the agenda, unless you all want to amend your agenda, it's a five-year plan, but I'll stay, just in case you don't want to do that. Does anybody want to do that? Never mind. Just a joke. And we do appreciate the Budget Committee giving their budget guidelines a little earlier than they normally have, and that just really helps us out in the budget process. And I'm here to answer any questions also that I can, and if I can't, I will have Dr. Looney email you with the answers.
Seeing none.
None? Okay.
Thank you. Are there any other reports of county offices or committees? All right, moving on with the agenda. Next, we have appointments. First up is the Emergency Communications Board. Expiring term is vacant, and the nomination is John Almond. Entertain a motion. Commissioner Webb, the motion, Commissioner Hester the second. All in favor? Say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Public Building Authority, resignation Gary Cooper, nomination Joey Abney. Okay, Dwight Jones the motion, and Commissioner Webb the second. All in favor? Say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have our consent agenda. On it, we have the roads and our notaries, and we'll entertain a motion. All right, Commissioner Smith, the motion, Dwight Jones the second. This is a machine vote, isn't it? Okay. So all, any discussion? Not on consent. Okay. So in that case, we are ready to vote if they get it up. All right? If you're in favor, press your yes button. Oppose, your no. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Okay. 23, yes, zero, no.
Resolution's passed. Consent agenda has passed. Next is Resolution 1-19-8. Initial resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $18,250,000 of general obligation bonds of Williamson County, Tennessee. Commissioner Smith?
Move for approval.
Dwight Jones the second. Property Committee?
640 against.
Budget Committee?
4, yes, 0, no.
Explanation, please.
As Nina pointed out, there are actually three items tonight that deal with this particular project. As you, as you look in the initial resolution, it describes 11 buildings that are operated, owned and operated by the county, that are going to be touched by this project that has been studied for probably six months by Schneider Electric, who has a corporate headquarters here in Cool Springs, and is a, is a good corporate citizen here in Williamson County. These improvements to these various buildings include energy upgrades, very similar to what we've done in the schools. In some cases, they include other pieces, HVAC work. In the case of this particular building, this building is 60 years old. There's not been anything really done to it since probably 1987, when the hospital moved out. But it is a, it's a 60-year-old building. So the various things that they are proposing for this particular building to extend its life another 20 years, or 40 years, or even another 60 years, include windows, include boilers, HVAC controls, facade, lighting, all those energy efficiencies that will save us money in the long run, HVAC fixes that will make it more comfortable for our staff and also our citizens who come here to visit. We actually have a couple of representatives from Schneider who have worked on this project for the last six months. If anybody has specific questions about the project itself, they would be glad to answer it. But in the Budget Committee, in reviewing this particular project itself, in this particular building that we're in right now, given the, given the age of it, the possibility of extending its life and making it usable for several more decades versus the cost of abandoning it and trying to build another state-of-the-art building for our services that we offer, there's no comparison between the $18 million and what it would cost us to do that. And the $18 million, of course, covers 11 buildings. Probably about 10 of it just covers this building. So in hearing from Schneider, and we're going to have an up-to-date facility that'll be welcoming for our staff, for our citizens. It will have a new look. It'll be much more energy efficient, and it will, the project will prepare, repair a lot of the infrastructure serving the building, including sewer lines that are broken and various things of that nature. So I think those of us in the Budget Committee who heard this proposal were, were very impressed with their approach for this building, as well as the other 10 buildings that are included in it. And like I say, if you have any other specific questions, the folks from Schneider can, can answer those, but I would, I would urge you to support this.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Commissioner Lawrence?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if maybe the Schneider people would be able to answer this, or somebody on the commission, but as part of this study was any, is any of the projections of the repairs or upgrades that are going to be made, are they going to increase the capacity of this building? We've got a number of departments that are maxed out, the Election Commission, other, you know, the school system. They, you know, we need, we need more space. I'm just wondering if we looked at potentially adding more space to this plan as part of this project.
Commissioner Lawrence, we have looked at some expansions here, and we're not ruling those out at this particular time. One is this particular building, we need to get it more secure-ready for you and the many people that look here. We've looked at knocking the signs out, we've looked at knocking the ends out, that's not included in that. You bring attention to the Election Commission. I want to remind you that the, the Election Commission is actually going to be moving on Downs Boulevard, on a building that we have leased. And when we did the lease, five, six, seven years ago, we put in the provision that if individual ever decided to sell it, that we could purchase it with our first right of refusal. He's, we've exercised that, and we're in the process of purchasing this, purchasing this on Downs Boulevard, where one of our emergency management facilities are in now. We will reconfigure that, so that will free up our election processes. And they'll also be voting down on the Downs Boulevard location, which is a real challenge here. Every single time, there's election for early voting and just for the, the activities that go on here because of all the people coming in to vote. So early voting will be conducted down there, and that, that will free up some room that we have here, and it will free up our old cafeteria room that we have to store our election equipment in and have our early voting. So we hope by doing some of these moves that we're doing here from the Schneider proposal to us, that's more of an efficiency, more of an energy production, and, and quite frankly, it saves us a lot of money in the long run. And as Commissioner Smith has indicated, and I think one of the commissioners asked at the Budget Committee, why don't we look at doing it in the school building or another county commission project? It gets up into very, very large numbers. We've got about 100, and I think, if Vince is here, we've got about 120,000 square feet.
I think there's more, about 150,000.
So somewhere around 150,000 square feet in this building and all the floors that we have. And to calculate that out at 250, $300 a foot, you can see without, and we own the land here. So we are making improvements here, trying to spin some things off to try to give us more room. But this, this particular one is not about that. Those others will fall in line. You've already okayed those.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I just, it just seems to me that it makes sense that while we're doing a project like this, that we look at potentially ways that we could, could add on to the building, since we do have departments that need more space. So I was just wondering if that would, if it wasn't already included in there, if that's something we could, could add as part of this project.
So again, I'll highlight, as soon as we get that under our belt, we hope to have them in before the next election in 2020. Have all this done in the next 2020 for the Election Commission.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
23, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 1-19-10. Resolution authorizing the issuance, sale, and payment of not to exceed $10 million of general obligation bond anticipa, I've got the wrong one. Yep. Excuse me? It stuck to the other one. We'll try again. Resolution 1-19-9. Resolution of the Williamson County Board of County Commissioners, approval of an intent to fund for $17,947,584 for capital recovery and reinvestment projects proposed by Schneider Electric. Commissioner Jones?
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Smith the second. Property Committee?
640 against.
Budget Committee?
4, yes, 0, no.
Explanation.
This is the same project as Mr. Smith, just Commissioner Smith just talked about. This is actual the cost minus the closing cost. While, while they are here, I would like to recognize Todd Smith and Kyle Keith. Thank you for all the work y'all put into it. I realize it's your job, but I appreciate it for the county and taxpayers of this county.
Why don't you stand where I can see? See?
I just wanted to recognize them. I'm not going to go into a long explanation, but I do appreciate y'all's work on it.
All right, thank you. All right. Are there any questions on this one? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
23, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Now, Resolution 1-19-10. Resolution authorizing the issuance, sale, and payment of not to exceed $10 million of general obligation bond anticipation notes of Williamson County, Tennessee, making provisions for the issuance, sale, and payment of said notes, establishing the terms thereof and the disposition of the proceeds therefrom, and providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of principal and interest on the notes. Commissioner Smith?
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Jones the second. Property Committee?
640 against.
Budget Committee?
4, yes, 0, no.
Explanation, please.
This is the third piece of, of the puzzle that Nina referred to. This is an authorization for us to issue short-term bond anticipation notes, which are actually short-term borrowing that we can use to get the project going, once the proper notices have, have been filed and the time periods have expired. And it allows us to, from the proceeds of the bond issue in the fall, to pay back the $10 million that we essentially advanced to start the project. And, and so this is something we've done a number of times in the past, in terms of timing of paying for something. We would issue bond anticipation notes. Later on, we would issue a bond issued and then repay the, the bond anticipation notes.
Any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're, what we do have on, Commissioner Sturgeon?
Thank you. If I can ask Commissioner Smith, is there an added cost to doing it this way? Like when you borrow $10 million with short-term notes so that you get the project going, are you paying more to use that money than if we just waited until the loan was available?
Please, speaking to your microphone.
Is there an added cost to financing it this way?
I would, I would defer to Mayor Anderson or Nina to, to speak to that. There, there are different processes that, that are used for handling these.
There are some closing costs, but it is not the same percentages as with your bonds.
How would you compare that? I don't have exact-- $10,000 or $300,000 or?
I don't have those exact figures.
Well, I'm just wondering if it wouldn't make more sense to wait until the, until the loan's available?
Well, this would allow us to get started on the project and bridge us over until we could issue the bonds.
I understand.
It'll be minimal cost compared to a bond issue.
In terms of closing and fees and that sort of thing. The other advantage of getting going on the project, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
The other advantage is, is the sooner we get the project going, the more quickly we'll begin to, to see the savings from the efforts of the project in terms of the insulation, the windows, the, you know, the lighting, the boilers, all of those things. There are projections over, over a 20-year period of the kind of savings that we're going to be returning from the project.
Would it be possible just to find out what that financing cost is? Yeah. And check that? Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 1-19-11. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2018-19 general assessments budget by $3,440. Revenues to come from probation fees. Commissioner Jones?
Move for approval?
Commissioner Dwight Jones, the second. Law enforcement, public safety?
640 against.
Budget Committee?
Four, yes, zero, no.
And explanation, please?
The drug testing expenses that we have currently exceeded the projected, projections, and these expenses are going to be covered by probation fees.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 1-19-12. Resolution authorizing the Williams County Mayor to enter into an agreement with Southern Health Partners Incorporated to provide health care services to juveniles being held in the Williamson County Juvenile Detention Center, and appropriating and amending the 2018-19 juvenile court budget by $13,104. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds. Commissioner Ricky Jones?
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Smith, the second. Law enforcement?
6740 against.
And Budget Committee?
Four, yes, zero, no.
Explanation, please?
As in the title says, we have to provide health care, and this is just getting this company to help us. I mean, where we, they provide the health care and we reimburse them.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Smith, do you have?
Yeah, just, just to add to what Commissioner Jones was saying, this is the same group that's been providing health care services for our juvenile services department. It's just a change in the nature of the contract that they, that they want to go to, which every other provider handles their contracts in the same way that this is going to be. And, but it's, it's the same service that we've been getting in the past.
The contract's expired, and this is renewing it.
Just--
Are there any questions? Other questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button? Commissioner Lawrence? Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 1-19-14. Resolution amending the 2018-- Sorry? Did I skip one?
Yeah.
Oh, I did. I'm sorry. Turned over too many. Resolution 1-19-13. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2018-19 juvenile services budget by $25,000. Revenues to come from participant fee, participant fees and detention contracts. Commissioner Jones?
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Smith, the second. Law enforcement, public safety?
740 against.
Budget Committee?
Four, yes, zero, no.
Explanation?
This is a program for first-time offenders or users of drug or alcohol. It's called an insight program that each of these young people will be taking. And then we pay it for, from their fees.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 1-19-14. Resolution amending the 2018-2019 highway department budget and appropriating up to $103,788.40 from auctioned equipment. Revenues to come from the sale of the equipment. Commissioner Smith?
Move for approval?
Commissioner Dwight Jones, the second. Highway Commission was 540 against. Budget Committee?
Four, yes, zero, no.
Explanation, please?
We sold some old equipment. We need to put that in the fund so we can purchase some newer equipment that we need.
Any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button? Okay. We'll just record the vote, and he will vote out loud.
Dwight?
How do you vote?
Yes.
Okay. His yes, record the vote.
We cannot.
Oh, you can't record it?
Are we going to record the 23?
Now you're absent.
I did that. If I took him off, I can proceed. If I, if I mark him absent, we can proceed.
We'll put it back and let's see if it's working now for just a minute.
Tom, you just broke it good.
The light's on and nobody's home. Mark him absent.
We're going to count you 23.
Resolution passes. 23. Resolution passes 23 to zero.
That's correct.
Bert needs to clear his-- Resolution 1-19-15. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2018-19 sheriff's office budget by $50,000. Revenues to come from county general fund bas, balance. Commissioner Ricky Jones?
Second.
Commissioner Smith, the second. Law enforcement, public safety committee?
740 against.
Budget Committee?
Four, yes, zero, no.
Explanation, please?
The sheriff's office has received $50,000, and they've deposited that, and they need to buy some law enforcement equipment and maintain that equipment.
Are there any questions? Seeing, seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button? Okay. All right, record the vote, please, Ms.--
Twenty-three, yes.
All right, the vote is 23, yes, zero, no. Resolution passes.
That's correct.
Resolution 1-19-16. Resolution authorizing the Williams County Mayor to execute a grant agreement with the State of Tennessee Department of Military and Tennessee Emergency Management Agency in appropriating and amending the Office of Public Safety 2018-19 budget by $131,295. Revenues to come from Homeland Security Grant Funds. Commissioner Jones?
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Smith, the second. Law enforcement, public safety?
640 against.
And Budget Committee?
Four, yes, zero, no.
Explanation, please?
This is a grant for training for domestic terrorism, and it's for, it's just a grant that we receive for training.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 1-19-17. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2018-19 Parks and Recreation budget by $55,000. Revenues to come from participant fees. Commissioner Herbert?
Move for approval?
Commissioner Smith, the second. Parks and Recreation Committee?
540 against.
Budget Committee?
Four, yes, zero, no.
Explanation, please?
This is money from the Performing Arts Center that revenues from the fees from that, and it'll be used for Performing Arts Center.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 1-19-18. Resolution to urge the General Assembly to support the restoration of the Registrations Commissioner, Commission. Commissioner Sturgeon?
Move for approval?
Commissioner Nations, the second. Tax Study Committee?
44, 44, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Four, yes, zero, no.
Explanation, please?
Yeah, this is regarding the Registars Commission, and historically, they always got 5% commission on the taxes they collected for the state. But back in 2006, the state just decided that they would keep 52% of that. And it's been, it's added up to a lot of money, and we're urging the, our representatives in the Assembly to return that money and get us back to the original 5%. And I believe there's other counties around the state that are doing the same thing.
Any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 1-19-19. Resolution authorizing the Williams County Mayor to execute a license agreement with Verizon to provide space at the Williamson County Administrative Complex to install equipment. Commissioner Smith?
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Dwight Jones, the second. Property Committee?
640 against.
Budget Committee?
Four, yes, zero, no.
Explanation, please?
This project by Verizon would not only upgrade the service that they provide within our building here and make it much better for the folks who work here and visit here, but it also takes pressure off some of their services that they provide in the surrounding area. So, so they have a double impetus to, to want to improve their services here in this building that'll also help their other customers in the area.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 1-19-20. Resolution to adopt the 2019 Williamson County Road List. Commissioner Smith?
Move for approval?
Mr. Dwight Jones, the second. The Highway Commission was 540 against. Explanation, Commissioner Smith?
This is presented to us by the staff of the Highway Commission every year, and it's something that, that we need to do in terms of approving the official road list and the status of those roads, and also the changes that have been made in those roads, the classifications, that sort of thing. It's so we have an official accounting of the road system that the county is responsible for, and I would ask your approval.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change your vote? Record the vote, please, Ms. Anderson. It's 23, yes, zero, no. Resolution passes. Resolution 1-19-21. Resolution to amend the five-year capital improvement program for schools, roads, fire protection, and recreation. Commissioner Ricky Jones?
Move for approval?
I'm sorry. Second was Commissioner Dwight Jones. Law enforcement, public safety?
740 against.
The Highway Commission was 540 against. Education Committee?
640 against.
And Parks and Recreation Committee?
540 against.
And Budget Committee? Explanation, please?
These are the plans that are mandated for us to sort of have a roadmap of what's coming down or anticipates what's coming down five years from now. It in no way says that we have to fund these at these times. It's just for planning purposes. And I defer to the mayor or any of the department heads if you have any questions.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one question. I was looking through this, and this may be a question for Mac. There's some, some, it looks like some money being appropriated in here for emergency stations in Tryune and Arrington. We've got, we've got at least one neighborhood, maybe two, out on Clovercroft Row, we've got Bell Chase and some others that have recently fallen outside of the five, five-mile radius of our emergency response station. So their property, homeowners' insurance premiums have tripled. So I'm just wondering if there's anything in here that's going to give them relief. I know we're working on that maybe separately, but just wanted to see if there's anything in, in that area that will help those citizens.
Thank you, sir. The, the goal is to cover the entire community in the five mile, but that takes, we estimate, twenty-plus stations. There are fourteen volunteer stations right now. So those, um, those stations in the Arrington, Triune area, um, it takes two or three to cover all of those areas. Um, and so, um, each time you move one, it's a five-mile road distance circle. So we work, uh, in concert with GIS and mapping. It would not, one station is not going to relieve all of those areas, but as we put all of those pieces together over time, the goal would be between station building and automatic aid agreements with our city partners, um, to be able to, to cover all of those. Um, it is significantly difficult for any community to cover a hundred percent of your five mile. Um, and so we focus on the high call volume areas, but yes, some of those areas would see benefit. Um, we'd have to get to specific addresses and specific stations, um, and look at a map if I were to answer kind of in detail, um, by neighborhood or road, but yes, that is the goal.
Okay, I, I have talked with Bill about some of the residents in Bell Chase. Do you know specifically anything about whether there's any, any agreements that have been put in place to, to help those?
Um, no, we are working on the automatic aid agreement and still in, in discussions with Franklin and Brentwood for that, that specific area.
Okay, so not at this time?
Not at this time.
All right, okay. Thank you, Mac.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution one dash nineteen dash twenty-two. Resolution declaring certain Williams County-owned phaser, electrical weapons and cartridges as surplus to be disposed of in accordance with applicable law. Commissioner Ricky Jones?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Dwight Jones, the second. Law enforcement, public safety?
Seven four zero against.
Property committee?
Seven four zero against.
Budget committee?
Four yes, zero no.
Explanation, please.
This is just getting rid, rid of some old phasers.
Are there any questions?
They didn't work anymore.
They weren't working.
Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. Press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution one dash nineteen dash twenty-three. Resolution authorizing the Williams County mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement with the city of Franklin, Tennessee, for the construction and operation of a joint fire station and emergency response station. Commissioner Dwight Jones?
Move for approval.
I'm, I'm sorry, where was that? Commissioner, Commissioner Nations, the second. Uh, property committee?
Five four zero against.
Uh, law enforcement? Public safety?
Uh, seven zero.
Budget committee?
Uh, four yes, zero no.
Explanation, please.
This is just a, an interlocal agreement with the city of Franklin, um, for the construction operation out there at the Ag, Ag Park. Um, if there's any other questions, I'll let Mac or somebody answer.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Try again. Keep trying.
Your, your died boat.
Do you mind voting out loud, Bert?
Yes.
All right, mark him absent and we'll go from there. All right, he's been. All right, record the vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
All right, with Bert just, twenty-three, yes, zero, no. Resolution passes. Resolution one dash nineteen dash twenty-four. Resolution accepting a donation of a Wee learning computer from the Williams County Public Library Foundation on behalf of the Williams County Public Library. Uh, Commissioner Webb?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Nations, the second. Uh, library board?
Six four zero against.
Property committee?
Five four zero against.
Budget committee?
Four yes, zero no.
Uh, explanation, please.
As you can see, the Williams County Library Foundation is donating eight AWE learning computers and one tablet to the library of approximate value of twenty-two thousand dollars.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Commissioner? Okay. Okay, all right. Vote, Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay, record the vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no. Resolution one dash nineteen dash twenty-five. Resolution appropri- authorizing the Williams County mayor to execute an agreement to purchase improved property located at nineteen thirty-five Thompson Station Road West, Thompson Station, Tennessee. Commissioner Smith?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Dwight Jones, the second. Uh, property committee?
Seven four zero against.
Budget committee?
Four yes, zero no.
Explanation, please.
Uh, this is a piece of property in the Thompson Station area that, uh, that we need for expansion of our services down in that, uh, uh, particular area. It was, uh, it was a good location for us. It was a good price. So we're, we're planning forward.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Sturgeon?
I'd just like to know if we specified what services we're providing here.
So as, um, Commissioner Lawrence had asked about his particular jurisdiction, we're trying to buy land in those five-mile radius areas as you heard Mac indicate. Uh, one of the areas that we've looked at in that area will be a fire station. When we run the numbers also for our ambulance, for an example, you approved the location at Franklin, uh, the memorandum of understanding or the, uh, agreement for us to sign off on. In that particular location, we're going to also put an ambulance building that's detached. Uh, this is a first, I believe, in the city of Franklin where we've been able to negotiate with them and have a detached, uh, building that would handle our ambulances. When we look at the College Grove, the way our ambulance work now, and Alan can give you the specifics or we can give you a map, they have roving ambulances and we wear those out. And so when you have a particular, uh, call for an ambulance, then everyone has to shift. So we will look at that area at that time. As you notice, you're just purchasing the land. There's enough land there for us to do what we need to do. The model we've been following is the one on Patensville, Patensville Road. Uh, this one will not, um, necessitate that many bays and that larger facility. They don't have the usage there yet, but we will look at that at that time when we come back for the building and see that the land would support that, but we're not making that commitment until we look at the, to look at the needs. Do you, does it need to be parked there or do we need this thing moving, the ambulance moving around in the area? So right now it'll just be fire and the community service building. All of our units who haven't been out to Patensville, I encourage you to go. There's a small community service business, also in law enforcement. Uh, the sheriff has a facility there so that his men and women don't always have to come back into the office and, uh, fill out their necessary paperwork with electronics and technology the way it is, but there's still a place that we need there and we also allow the community to use them, uh, where, where we can. So this is a huge step. We've been looking a long time to buy the land there. We'll come back with the funding for the building, uh, at a later date. We need to find something out in the Triune area to help Commissioner Lawrence's geographic area out so we can get this five-mile radius. And you're right, it is a huge lick. We did this in the eighth and ninth district a few years ago where we had to move some...
Goose Creek.
Yeah, Goose Creek. We've done it several times and when you go from a protection class ten or a protection class nine or you're in a six, seven and go the other way, your rates can just skyrocket. Uh, it's just astronomical and we're working as hard as we can to keep up with that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Nations?
May I answer my question? Thank you.
And I might follow up, Tommy, be- because you, you all can help us out from time to time. Uh, these interlocal agreements with our different city partners, I get it. Uh, we want to have those memorandums with, Mac, what do you call that? When the phone rings, they go auto- automatic aid. Uh, Bill. Um, it, it's a wonderful tool that you have and our partners, uh, throughout the cities oftentimes, um, they're, they're not eager to do it, but they'll work with us because you have to realize the city services pay for those fire stations, the men and women and the stations inside the city, but it would be nice if we can get there. All of them have automatic aid that if we need them, we just call them and they're there. But to have that automatic aid when that phone call comes in, that they would disperse out. And so, uh, Bill has been charged along with Mac to kind of look at some other models that are being used throughout the United States that maybe we pay a fee automatically until we get that to help our neighbors out in there, but these, uh, these insurance rates are astronomical when you get into class nine and class ten and you're outside of a radius of, how many miles from a fire station?
Five.
Five miles. If you get outside of five miles, no fire station, no, um, fire hydrant within a thousand feet, it gets very costly.
Is this property within Thompson Station City limits?
No, it's not. And somebody asked me about that, so I thi- I think this would be a good time, if you don't mind, Tommy, I know we're a little ahead of schedule and everybody's wanting to go home, but, um, you know, as the cities continue to grow, and let's go to Nolansville, uh, which is a prime example in, in the Commissioner Lawrence area over there and, and our chairman. Um, the station has been manned out there for years. In fact, it's one of the top-rated ones over a period of time, but people get older and they come off and the new blood, you need them to filter in, and so we've solved some of those problems in our Patens and out in, uh, out in Judy and, uh, Betsy's area by building a bigger network that they can work off from. Um, but smaller cities, as a general rule, don't have the resources, uh, in which they can, uh, buy, put in a station, buy the equipment, pay the manpower to, to, to be in these smaller ru- uh, cities. Now, you know, the other side of that is I, I'm willing to work with them the same way, thing we do with our law enforcement community. But if you want to be a city, you're going to have to charge the services to, to offer those services and sometimes that's hard, that if, you know, whether it's Nolansville or Thompson Station, uh, you brag about the low city tax rates you have, well, guess who's really paying them? You guys here are having to make those tough decisions and it's good for Spring Hill and Brentwood and Franklin to step up and help, but they can only do so much. And so this particular location is not inside that jurisdiction, but between the Patensville Road location and this location, we'll be able to service some of those i- issues and the Thompson Station issue. Going back to Nolansville, the same thing. The city of Nolansville does not have a fire district. It is a fire station run by volunteers. And now the city does pay a fee or pay some money and to help offset that, but at the end of the day, all residents pay to help to pay for them. It would be almost impossible for the two county commissioners in Nolansville, two or four that's in Thompson Station to say, well, don't offer any services there. But we do extend that olive branch to any of those cities. They need to help us where they can. Um, just like we're in the same situation as Franklin where we ask them for that automatic aid. Well, that is true about the smaller cities and oftentimes they want to become cities to block annexation or to do this or do that, but at the end of the day, their citizens demand a higher level of service than we can provide. And our, all of our stations are volunteer. And if, if you think it's costly to get into school business, just try to get into fire service business and equalize and stabilize, um, those, those rates across the board. Fairview has worked with us over the years, but at, at the day, today, that will be serviced by volunteers and so we'll be reaching out to our city partners to help pay for some of those services.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. All in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button? All right, uh, Mr. Schelfer?
Bert, I'm not going to count you out.
Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Again, twenty-three, yes, zero, no. Resolution passes. Resolution one dash nineteen dash twenty-six. Resolution authorizing the Williams County mayor to enter into a lease agreement with U.S. Congressman-elect Mark Green. Commissioner Dwight Jones?
Move for approval.
Second.
Uh, I'm sorry, I had to hurt you.
Hey.
Commissioner Herbert, the second. Uh, property committee?
Five four zero against.
Uh, explanation, please.
This is the current, uh, currently being occupied by Mark Green, our congressman. Uh, it's the office, same office that's vacated by now Senator, um, Blackburn. Uh, so, it actually, I think the rate went up a little bit, uh, but it's the same office, same location.
Any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Mason?
I have a question and this may be for the interim sheriff. I, I know that is a secure building. Everybody has to go through a metal detector. When we start renting it out to whoever it may be, does that put an extra cost on our law enforcement? Do we have to have extra people there to man the, the metal detector or how does that affect it when we start renting to entities outside of the sheriff's department at that
Commissioners, uh, no, that doesn't cost us any extra. We, we have our warrant division which is stationed on the top floor of that anyway. They have a private and secure entrance that they go into and you can't reach that without a special pass key to get through there.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes, I've got two questions. One, uh, it's my understanding that one of the main reasons that Senator Blackburn was housed in the courthouse was due to security concerns at her previous office. Uh, do those same concerns exist for, uh, Dr. Green? Is that why there's a continuation of that?
Commissioner, um, to the chairman, once an individual either moves on from the office to someone else, we have, we, the contract is really with the federal government and so it has to be running on their succinct times that they're in office and not. Uh, the concerns that I suspect you're bringing up with the prior tenant, um, were addressed. We do have security there. They have a private entrance there and Commissioner, and Congressman Green, um, will have that same And Congressman Green will have that same access. But they wanted to have a position here in town. I don't think there's any security areas that I know of down there that's concerning them, do you? Vince, do you know of any? So if there's something that you know that we don't know, please let us know, because it's for all of the employees. And they do pay for it. Your federal dollars help reimburse that.
And one follow-up question. It's my understanding also that the historic courthouse is being looked at by the Public Building Authority for needs and courthouse needs and things of that nature. Is there any way this was going to interfere with their needs assessment or use of that building?
None whatsoever. In fact, the group that's looking at that, they're looking at several of our buildings, and it's just another step in it. But we're always glad to have our congressmen and senators in our jurisdiction. That helps you out and your constituents out, Eddie Dummigan. And it's a person or a business that pays for some of the rent.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button? All right. Anyone wishing to change your vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. I believe that concludes our agenda. I do have one announcement to make that the mayor asked me to make if I can find my agenda. Because of the lateness in the month of this meeting, the filing deadline for resolutions for our February meeting is going to be at noon on January 28th. That's just two weeks away. So it's a short timeframe. So we want to be sure to announce that to everyone, that the deadline for filing for the February meeting is January 28th at noon. Any other-- I'm sorry. Any other announcements at this time? We are adjourned.